We'll begin shortly. The Peralta College's Board Meeting will begin shortly, May 14th, 2019. It is now 7:00 PM and the Peralta College's Board Meeting will begin shortly. The Peralta College's Board Meeting will begin momentarily. The Peralta College's Board of Trustees Meeting, May 14th, 2019, will begin in a moment. The Board of Trustees are still in closed session. The Board Meeting will begin momentarily. Check, check, check. The Peralta College's Board of Trustees Meeting of May 14th, 2019, will begin soon. The Peralta College's Board Meeting on May 14th, 2019, will begin soon. The Board of Trustees Meeting will begin shortly. The Board of Trustees Meeting will begin shortly.
Oh, I'm doing good. How are you doing?
Good.
Madam Clerk?
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We are going to call this meeting to order. Hello, audience. Hello, public. Hi. If I can have all trustees...
Dr. Brown. Dr. Brown.
That's okay. I love all of this. Everyone's got to catch up, yes. So, we're calling the meeting to order and we will open with a pledge led by President Karras. Thank you for that. Madam Vice President, do we have a report out from closed session?
Good evening. At closed session, the Board voted to ratify the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which is subject to contractual agreement by the Chancellor. Recommendation to appoint Chung Wai Chum as the Interim Director of Business and Administrative Services, College of Alameda, effective July 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2019, at $128,395 annually. Eyes six, absent one. Brown. If you're here, do you want to stand up and take a bow? Madam President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you for that. We will move to approval of the agenda.
Show them.
It's been moved. Do we have a second? It's been seconded. No discussion, so roll call, please.
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you win? Okay. Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move to 2.6, approval of the minutes. Motion, please.
Come on.
It's been moved and seconded. If no discussion, roll call, please.
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez, you win? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese? Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Associated student government reports. Do we have students...
Madam President?
Yes.
Before we move on, can I ask that we revisit the agenda and pull items 5.3 and 5.4 from the consent calendar and move them to action, please? These are two items dealing with...
Good evening, Board of Trustees.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Hold on one second. I'm sorry. So sorry. So, just noting for the record, item 5.3 and 5.4 have been moved to action.
If there's no objection.
Any objections? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Items have been moved. Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. We will be giving an update about ASCOA. Last May 2nd, we had an Earth Day activity. The following week, Tuesday, May 7th, we had an awarding ceremony for the scholars and transfer students. Today, we are hosting a study jam where students can come and get ready for finals week. We will be providing foods and shooters.
There's also an ILE conference in Vermont, which is happening on July 21st to 26th, 2019. And we have four participants for the conference. For Wednesday, the 22nd, we will be having our end-of-the-semester luncheon for student workers and ASCOA. For Wednesday, the 22nd, we will be having our end of the semester luncheon for student workers and ASCOA. We will be having our last meeting on May 16th, 2019. And now, on behalf of all members of ASCOA who cannot be here today, we, the members of ASCOA, decided to share with the Board our experience on ASCOA and how we feel about the resolution.
I am new to ASCOA and I enjoy being a part of it. The group is always open to new ideas and we will always do what we can to create events for the students. I have never seen any anomalies or difficulties working with other senators or the director, Asia Butler. She always sends us details of events and things that we need to be a part of. When I heard about the resolution, I was confused because I'd never seen or experienced any of the things that were mentioned in the resolution. This organization is a safe space for all of us.
And I want to share a comment for another student who is Sabrina Agud. I've been in, she said, I've been in ASCO for two semester overall. It's been a great helping out students and create fun experience for them. On the resolution, it points out that the director of student activities controlled the student. That is not the case for ASCOA. Asia always let us express ourselves and listen to what our needs. So, overall, ASCOA did not have any problems that we think will be criticals to others. We are doing our jobs in order to create a fun semester for the student, and that will be all. Thank you.
Interesting report.
Hello.
Oh, I'm fine. Hello, everyone. My bad. I had to catch my breath for a minute. So, right now, ASMC, we've been tuning down, getting ready for transitioning period. I've been working with the ASMC president for next year on our spring training date. I'm going to make sure I train them all on our bylaws, the Robbery of Order, Brown Act, any federal laws that we need to be paying attention to, and then also making sure that they know about the different processes of part of Merit and the Peralta District. I also have, we've also been working with our president more on trying to change the culture of our campus because we've noticed that it's not up to this standard that we need to be creating student success, unlike the other campuses that I've heard about. You guys are going to hear a report later in public comment that I really want to commend one of my constituents for stepping up here and putting her all into this. I hope you guys really do listen to her and look forward to just start making some change. I'm going to miss all of you guys since this is my second to last meeting, along with the trustees. I'm not done. I have one more year, but this is my second to last board meeting.
I'm sorry. Didn't you have a very important meeting on Thursday or Friday of last week, Wednesday? Could we hear about that?
Jesus. Okay. So, on May 10th of Friday, I met, along with some of my board members from double A, triple C, but I got a little bit of a long time with the California Community Colleges State Chancellor, E. Lloyd, or Oakley. And I let him know about the difficulties of the Bay Area and how there's difficultness in our district, but also just generally between 13 colleges that are here in the Bay Area. And he eventually wants to come down here to try and see what we can do to partner together to fix those things. So, hopefully, you guys are paying attention to some of the stuff that I'm doing. And I guess someone's going to put it out here eventually. A few weeks ago, I was also on the new Student Centered for Funding Formula webinar. It's webinar number six, if anyone wants to watch it. I did speak on behalf of Peralta and Merit College. So, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We will move to Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor White, presidents, and guests. We have three campus reports. Berkeley City College celebrated Classified Appreciation Day with a Roaring Twenties Lunch, sponsored by their exceptional administrative team on Friday, May 10th. The Classified Employee of the Year is Ms. Yolanda Young, one of the college's bursars. College, I mean, Classified Senate Elections will begin the week of May 20th. The Senate is getting involved with other activities on campus and will be playing key roles in their Guided Pathways Program and their food pantry. The BCC Veterans Club is sponsoring and assembling toiletry kits for their homeless students, which will be ready in early August, 2019. Moving on to the Merit College Campus Report. The Senate, Merit College Classified Senate, met on Tuesday, May 7th. They discussed the Merit College Strategic Planning Summit, which was held the 26th of April. Senators were encouraged to attend the Merit College Strategic Follow-Up Meeting on the 10th of May, from 1:00 to 4:00. At the time, senators expressed concerns regarding the budget cuts and restructuring. They also discussed professional development. The Senate discussed concerns regarding the lack of funding for professional development for classifieds. Three requests were sent to the President and Business Manager on March 7th via email. The Senate was unable to attend due to late campus approval and/or funding limitations. The funding requests included, amongst others, Classified Leadership Institute meeting at Tahoe City on June 13th through the 15th, funding for an ice cream social that they had held on March 21st, and funding for the President's Retreat, which they held on April 6th. Moving forward, they will send a proposal to the Staff Development Committee in the summer for the next Flex Day, which occurs in August. The Senate expressed an interest in attending the Free Adult Mental Health First Aid Training coming up this summer. Merit College Classified Senators were encouraged to complete the Chancellor's survey and attend a public forum with Dr. Bryce Harris on the 8th of May. In terms of announcements, the Peralta Association for African-American Affairs will have a graduation on the 18th of May at 11:00 in the morning. And the Merit College's commencement occurs on the 22nd of May at 5:00 p.m. The last report is from the College of Alameda Classified Senate. The College of Alameda Classified Senate is revisiting an issue that they held before, which is dealing with the 4-10s. They're requesting a cost savings report to justify the mandated 4-10 schedule for 2019. This is something that, as of the 14th of May, has not been negotiated nor voted on by SCIU Local 1021. While the classified professionals wait, we are once again being asked by management to submit their 4-10 schedules for the summer. There were three negotiated options that was given to Local 39. One was eight hours, Monday through Friday. A central location will be provided for those working on Fridays so as to ensure proper supervision. Two of the options was use vacation time for eight hours each week. And three, Tuesday through Friday work schedule. All classifieds should not be required to adhere to the 4-10s and forced to utilize vacation time to offset this mandate. Allow us to work our usual work schedules. A 4-10 schedule creates hardships for many as we have young children and other responsibilities that go beyond Peralta. Having to endure this along with the loss of much-deserved salary increases is more than our fair share. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you for that report. I would like to move to Academic Senate.
Good evening, members of the Board and everyone gathered here. As you know, next week is finals week, and so, all the faculty are getting ready to finish up. And this year has been a very interesting year upon reflection. And, you know, some of the things that are still outstanding that the faculty are concerned with are, the, the concern is about the casual employee issue that still seems to be lingering, the concern with faculty, particularly for our CTE and for our interpreters and other crucial areas. Making sure that we have those employees is going to be really important. I don't know what resolution is being done with this issue, but part of what concerns that the Academic Senate have, of course, is that as we move towards having these requirements with AB 705, Guided Pathways, and all these other requirements that the state has provided us with, the kinds of services and support we need to provide our students are going to need more resources and more supports, whether for safety or for other reasons. And so, when we don't have any resolution that can support our faculty, particularly in the CTE when they're utilizing, you know, dangerous tools and stuff, and no clear sense of where this is going in the future, that has me concerned. And then certainly with interpreters that our students use in the classroom. So, when I don't hear anything concrete and we're at the end of the academic year, that leaves a lot of uneasy feeling among faculty as we go into the summer and what are we expecting when August comes around. So, I think some level of communication is needed so that way we are clear about what exactly are we going to have with us come next year. So, I hope that those issues and other issues, as you look forward to the next coming years, as we try to address these state mandates, that we really, really look at how we're going to be able to fund these, given all of the different constraints that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to Public Communication. Madam Chair, do we have speakers?
We do. Would Brittany Boyle of Royal please come up? And Michelle Snyder? Uh, Hot Renee? From Journalism? And Jennifer Shinaskey?
Good evening, trustees. My name is Brittany. I am a current student at Laney College. I am here today to inform you of Peralta's staff discrimination and unprofessional practices that often turns into law enforcement being unjustly called on students that are unhappy with the services they are receiving on Peralta campuses. The problem is no reports are being filed at all, which leads to unnecessary conflicts between students and staff, which stay unsolved. I know these things are happening on campus because sheriffs were needlessly called on myself in a Laney Transfer Center after being bullied and then physically assaulted by Laura E. Ramos and told with intimidation by Ryan Zion to say I was not assaulted at all. Officer 1749 took no report, using alarming scenarios to scare and deter me from making a report on Ms. Ramos that day. The officers made it seem as if I would be further targeted on campus by authorities as a problem and/or my enrollment at Peralta could be in jeopardy because I wanted to speak out and report the incident that occurred. I feel this has to stop at Peralta. And any conflict with Peralta PD or sheriffs called by students or staff must be documented and properly investigated. Victims should not be told by Peralta staff to keep quiet on verbal, physical, and mental abuses by Peralta employees. I come to you, Board, to help find solutions to make students safer and protected when voicing truth about their concerns with Peralta staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor, right, Chancellor, can we, that was pretty alarming. Can we make sure that there's some follow-up on this specific issue?
Yes, we will do that. Thank you.
And I think the board clerk is coming to get a copy. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michelle Snyder. I'm one of the co-editors with the Laney Tower. And first off, I wanted to start and say that I started at Laney to become a journalist after I was covering violent Berkeley rallies after the presidential election. I recorded a lot of video footage of actual white nationalists who went to the Unite the Right rally in Charlottesville, and some of my footage actually helped identify them and get them arrested. And that was what started me on the path of journalism, and I decided to come to Laney. And when I came to Laney, I just thought, you know, I'm just trying to get a degree. But what I have learned is that I love Laney, like, I really do. The staff, the teachers, the faculty, everybody has been really supportive, for the most part. I think that there is some confusion about what we do as the Journalism Department, though. And we're not trying to make trouble. We're not trying to target anybody. We're just trying to get to the truth so we can kind of clear rumors, so that we can understand our problems here. We also want to talk about the good achievements of our, of our students and our faculty and our departments. I mean, there is a wealth of, not just at Laney, but at every college here. I'm amazed at the more things that I learn. So, I was really surprised considering, you know, what got me started, you know, free speech rallies and Journalism being about free speech, when we sent out a mass email about one of our articles. A few staff members started to verbally attack us and say that we were liars. They, I mean, they made it sound like gossip. I heard that the Laney Tower Journalism students, they lie and they deceive. But they didn't say why. They didn't say what they were even talking about. And, you know, I find this worrisome because this isn't the culture that I think that Laney, or the Peralta School District, I should say, wants. I don't think that this is the culture that we are going for. And I don't think that it speaks for a majority of us. I do find it alarming because it's been, you know, there has been a few people that spoke up, but it was overall silence in response to what these staff members did. And as co-editor, to have to explain this, that they generally said that all of our work was lies to the other students, I can't express to you how those students felt. That we really put our heart and soul into this because we want a better future, that we want to, you know, end and expose certain things, just like journalists do. And we live in a time in, when journalists are actually being attacked and endangered. So, it is our job to be fair, to not speak for other people, to, you know, speak of things that are important here. I don't mind criticism. I think that is part of it. We have to have a thick skin. But I don't think that we should be silent when we're being attacked and being called pretty much fake news. I don't think that's the culture that we have here. And that is why I came here, because I just wanted to point that out, that we do have a problem where there are certain people who are saying they're a family, and it's almost like a mob mentality and that we should not speak. And I don't think that that is helpful at all. So, I appreciate your listening to our, I appreciate all of you listening to, to our statements today. Thank you.
Hi. I might mirror a few things that my co-editor, Michelle, said. So, hi, everyone. My name is Saskia Hapvani. I'm a student reporter at Laney and co-editor of the Laney Tower newspaper. That's how I introduce myself whenever I'm pursuing a story at Laney. And I've been studying journalism at Laney for almost two years now, and I've noticed that all too often, when I introduce myself, I'm not very well-received. Now, as a young journalist, or as young journalists, we're not delusional. Like, we know that we're choosing a thankless job, and we're aware that many of, think of us like they think of corporate news, you know, conniving and invasive, who would do unspeakable things for a story. you know, conniving and invasive, who would do unspeakable things for a story. But we're not those journalists. We work really hard to be fair, accurate, and truthful. And let me tell you that Laney reporters have met their fair share of criticism in the Peralta world. You might have read one of my recent stories about the small electrical fire in the Student Center, which caused two buildings to close for the remainder of the semester. I think anyone would agree that we wouldn't be a good campus newspaper if we didn't cover such things that concern the students. But this was an important subject. And like any story, I treated it as such, making sure that I got everything right. And my faculty advisor, Bert Dragan, was actually so proud of the story that he sent it out in an email which I believe was sent to the entire district. Not 100% sure, but it was sent to a lot of people. And in this very public email chain, I was accused by paid Peralta staff of lying and misleading in my reporting of the story. One staff member even proudly expressed deep satisfaction at how well the Tower newspaper burned when he threw it in the fire. Now, while a handful of faculty members publicly showed their support, the accusations did seem to go widely unnoticed. And I understand the urge to avoid conflict, but people who work in educational institutions have a responsibility to serve students' needs. And that includes providing a safe educational environment for everyone, even young journalists who may cover sensitive topics that not everyone wants to talk about. You know, we're no strangers to the criticism, but paid employees openly shaming students' hard work and making vaguely threatening references should not be tolerated. But I want to let you know that we're really passionate about what we do, you know? Like, there's a common misconception that our faculty advisors do... I mean, we do everything. As students, we pitch the stories, we assign articles, we do all the photography work, we edit our own copies, and we spend hours and hours, guys, like so many hours. We just came out of production today. We're exhausted. And all of it pays off. Each semester, we return from statewide competitions with multiple awards. Yeah, and while some see us poorly, others have paid a lot of support to us. And this year, we finally got our new computers. We're really happy about that. Coverage of serious issues such as student and citywide homelessness and serious facility issues on campus. I want to shout out our two faculty advisors, Scott Strain and Bert Dragan, who have never ceased to remind us of the true value of what we are accomplishing. And if you weren't aware, Bert Dragan is retiring after a very long career advising the Laney Tower. I'm not sure how long. But yeah, he will be sorely missed. It's thanks to him that a lot of us got into this department, and Scott. Aleni Gastis, faculty member and former journalist, is filling in his position as chair and she is currently pouring all of her efforts into revitalizing our department. And I can't wait what she does next for us. And I urge you guys to look out for that. But yeah, I'll just wrap this up. You know, we love Peralta. We see its potential, and we want to give it the news coverage it deserves. But we are here to sell stories, not fairy tales. And that's okay. You know, that's our job. We know all of you work very hard to make this a great place. And I just encourage anyone to come to us with your stories and your concerns. And I promise you, we'll listen. Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, I dropped my pen. I have no notes, so it's fine. So usually, I'm standing here talking about how we can better utilize Peralta funds in more meaningful, more effective ways to support students and faculty in particular. I would be remiss if I don't point out the items that I had concerns about in today's e-communicay about our Public Information Officer and the ICCs that are on the agenda tonight associated with that work. It's come to my attention that we have categorical funds that are not being used for a second producer on our television channel. And so I'd like for the Board to ask questions about why those funds aren't being used appropriately and why we are outsourcing those jobs. But I'm not going to talk about Peralta stuff beyond that right now. What I'd like to do is highlight an action that is occurring in Sacramento next week because the other big piece to funding and to supporting students and the colleges is ensuring that we have more funding from the state. We are one of the lowest-funded K through 14 programs in the country, even though we are the fifth-largest economy in the world. So next week, educators from all over the state will be mobilizing to go to Sacramento to talk about anti-privatization. So the K through 12 folks are talking about the charter schools and how charter schools really siphon money away from community schools. It was a big topic in the Oakland School District strike that just wrapped up. For us, privatization seems to be taking on the face of online education. So we all know about the 115th Community College that was signed into law last year. It will directly compete with the OEI, the Online Education Initiative. It will directly take students away from our schools. And it will probably siphon off the highest-achieving students, right? Leaving the community colleges to do the good work that we do to serve students in our community, but the very hard work and will siphon off resources that we know that our students need desperately. So we will be going to deliver a vote of no confidence to the State Chancellor next Wednesday at 1:00. We'll be going over. The California Federation of Teachers, our parent union, has passed a no-confidence vote. The Faculty Association of the California Community Colleges, FAC, also has passed a no-confidence vote in the State Chancellor. And a variety of senators and unions across the state individually have done the same. So we will be delivering that vote of no confidence. We will be rallying in the Capitol Building to show that we're standing together as educators and community members. And then we'll be having a rally outside. So I sent emails to everyone on FAS throughout the district, but I know not everyone reads FAS. So I'd like to ask as many of you as possible to come next Wednesday. The program will be from 1:00 in the afternoon until 6:00 PM in Sacramento at the Capitol Building. Bring your kids, bring your grandkids, wear red, and show your support because the only way we're really going to influence Sacramento is to show up and show that we're willing to really fight for more funding for our students. Thanks.
Bert Dragan, were you going to speak? I'm sorry.
Thank you, trustees. Chancellor White, if you ever figure out where all those years went, let me know, will you? So I'm retiring after 40-something years of teaching Journalism at Laney. And I'm thrilled that Aleni Gastis will be taking over. She's done a lot in the last year to help revitalize the program. And there's a lot of work to be done. So two of our students have told you about the response that we got. I was the one, I was very proud of the article that Saskia wrote and sent it out to everybody. And as she mentioned, as both students mentioned, we got some very negative responses. And the person who sent in the main response that came early, I eventually was able to have a conversation with him, and we had a nice civil talk. What really bothered me was something that came into the email thread late. And Saskia referred to it, and somebody, an employee of Peralta, bragging about how nice it was to take the newspaper and burn it in his fireplace. And to me, that's shocking. And it's reminiscent of societies such as Germany in the 1930s where such things were permitted. And I was just wondering, rather, if he has that kind of hatred for student work, why he wouldn't contact me? Or my other conclusion is that we're kind of living under direction from a president who talks about fake news and calls Journalism the enemy of the people, which is really disturbing. So I just wanted to mention my shock at that. And if you read the email thread, I hope that you were shocked about that also. So again, the newspaper has won many awards. And it's a tricky role being a faculty advisor because these are, after all, students. But this is a real newspaper. And I try to instill in the students the importance of accuracy and fairness and accountability and other ethical considerations. And as far as the coverage is, again, one of the students mentioned, there's a lot of good things happening. But there are also things like student homelessness and a lot of issues, obstacles that students have to face. And these are things, I think, that a newspaper, college newspapers, should cover. And I'm very, very proud of the students who've done so much great work. It's been a pleasure, honor, teaching at Laney all these years. And I'll miss it, but I'm actually planning to come back. I'm a student in the Music Department. And I really enjoy doing that. And I hope to come back next spring and teach a new Journalism course called Gutenberg to Zuckerberg: How Media Shape Society. Thank you.
Please, through the chair, our chair's privilege, I'd like to turn the mic over to student trustee Jordan.
So I just wanted to say to my fellow students that it takes a lot of courage to come and speak your truth. And so no matter what happens from today forward, just be proud of yourself in knowing that you came and you spoke your truth to the Board of Trustees. And so I'm very proud. Keep going forward in your truth.
Madam President, we're done with public comment. Thank you, thank you. And thank you, students. Thank you, all students. We will move to the Chancellor's reports. Chancellor?
Thank you. And before I begin with my formal report, I would just like to take time to acknowledge Bert Dragan. And Bert, I want to invite you back, if you're in town. For May 28, I have a special treat planned for you. I want you to know that I found a picture of you, me, Jeanette Golds, Bill Love, and Bob Cabriner from some faculty celebration event back in, I want to say, 82? 1982 or 83? We both look quite different now. But I would like for you to come back. I just have something special I'd like for you to have in addition to sharing that picture and moment. Bert had a full head of hair, like I did. And hers was big and curly, 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 curly. You remember that, Bert? We appreciate the fine work you've done at the Laney Tower and thank you so much for your great service. Okay, we do have an enrollment update. There's not a whole lot around the enrollment. As you know, we're still enrolling students going forward. Dr. Brown, you can add to that.
Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and community. This is a very quick report, just to remind you that we'll be having an Enrollment Management Target Summary Report at each Board meeting so that the community and the trustees can keep on top of where we're at with our enrollments. As you'll notice from this report, it's not much different than the most recent Board meeting. And that's because the numbers won't change until we collect our positive attendance hours at the end of spring term, as well as the spring intercession. By the time we get to the July 25 meeting, and then the July, excuse me, the June 25 meeting, and then the July 9 meeting, we'll have a full summary of our annual residential and non-residential enrollment for 18, 19, including July 9. We will have submitted our P3 report, which will tell us really where we landed in this year. And we'll be able to discuss those in comparison to prior years and targets for the next academic year.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Brown? If not, we look forward to the continuing updates. And you're all familiar with the May revise. There were several great takeaways from the May revise. One, that there's a 3.26% COLA for California Community Colleges. The State Chancellor is holding the Hold Harmless, if you will, extending it one more year, which is really good. I think that's until 2021. And there was money in this May revise for facilities. Now, we are not at the finish line yet because, as you know, it goes through another process. And it has to be signed sometime in June. And we hope early June, not late June. But at this point, the May revise looks pretty friendly to the community colleges. Finally, I've been in touch with Dr. Stephanie Droger over the past several weeks, and particularly since we submitted our five-year fiscal improvement plan, the Integrated Plan. And a couple of things. One, I have assured her that although our FIP, Fiscal Improvement Plan, included general guidelines, outlines around how we were going to eradicate the structural deficit. For example, cut of 8 million over five years, 10% reserve, 2% contingency, were general parameters that the Board accepted, the governance groups accepted, and was submitted. So I've assured her that we are going to bake into a detailed five-year addendum, fiscal, financial addendum. We're going to bake in the student-centered funding formula and how that's going to affect our funding over those five years and how we will remain fiscally sound over those five years, continuing to maintain no less than a 10% reserve and, where possible, a 2% contingency. She was very glad to hear that. She actually called me today and said, "I'm looking forward to the addendum, and we'll get it in before the meeting." And her comments were, "It's great you're baking in the student-centered funding formula because it's probably going to mean good news for Peralta." And if you think about our demographics and the students we serve, that makes a lot of sense. For all of the trustees who attended the recent CCLC meeting, you'll recall that there are some districts that are not happy at all and nor should they be, since some of them had to return money and they've got a lot of issues. So we are cautiously optimistic. I'm not ready to pop champagne yet. But we will bring that addendum to the Board on May 28 with a full presentation of what it means in detail. And upon your blessing, we will forward that to Dr. Droger prior to the June 6 meeting. She's also invited us to participate, attend in the June 6 meeting. We'll do that in the conference room as their meeting, I believe, is in Long Beach or somewhere in Southern California. I will have the cabinet in the room during the meeting. As questions come up, the folks will be there to answer whatever those questions might be. But we expect to meet with the Commission on June 6 by phone. I said last thing, but that's not the last. Something happened recently that President Tomonong and President Burns share. And perhaps one of you or both of you could make just a brief, brief comment about this matter.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you, Chancellor White. So it is with deep sadness that I announced to the board, members of cabinet, and the public that right before the board meeting, I did receive a report from one of our instructors that one of our students, who is also an aspiring nursing student at Merrick College, passed away in the hospital today from a gunshot wound that he received outside of his home. He is survived by his wife and two children. His name is Makale Tesfomariem Mbaye. He was a 4.0 student, and the instructor described him as being one of the kindest and most hardworking student that he's had in the past two semesters.
Thank you. And we ask that perhaps the board meeting could be dismissed with a moment of silence.
In his honor.
In his honor.
Of course.
Yeah.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
It's very sad news. Very sad. Chancellor, I'd also like to talk about, you mentioned the June 6th meeting with the commissioners. I'd also like to get a sense from you when you plan to bring the president's vision for success to the board so that we may then follow up with our--
May 28th. It's going to be a big night because you're going to have big reports coming to you and that's going to be one of them.
Thank you.
Yes. One of the reasons why it was delayed is because we had to run it through governance before we brought it to the board. And when we bring it to the board, it'll be your opportunity to weigh in on the goals that have been agreed upon or vetted so far.
Okay. And we'll hear from each of the four colleges.
Not on the vision for, not on the vision for success goals, on the equity plans, I think. Now, that's a different, that's a different presentation. President Gilkerson.
I think our plan was to do the vision for success goals for the district at the next meeting and then subsequently follow up after you spend some time on those, then just bringing the subsequent meeting so that the board can see those after the district goals. Was the plan.
I'm sorry. So if you'd like to see those back-to-back, they have been integrated, so you'll see them embedded in the vision for success goals.
I think we may have a follow-up question for that. Trustee Reese.
The question that I had is Oakley's email to, for the districts to align to the local goals was such that we also needed to hear the president's or the colleges' individual goals so that we can orient our district goals to the individual college president's goals. So I guess I'm a little confused as to which direction--
I think we're saying the same thing. We're using different language.
Can we use the same language?
Yeah. We're going to work on that. President Gilkerson.
So we are saying the same thing. So the district has strategic goals that haven't been updated since 2015. And so some of the work that's gone on in participatory governance for the last year was started with a retreat and has been a defining of some updated goals that can align to the visions for success goals and certainly was done and led by a group of people led by Dr. Burns. And so the plan is to present those to you. They've gone through governance and been adopted by the PGC. And we felt like that was a heavy, like a lot of information to bring to a meeting. And so the idea was then to bring each of the colleges' goals aligned to the vision for success at the next meeting, but knowing that those goals had gone through the governance process at the colleges and had some feedback as well and will be presented to you for the next meeting. But it could be all brought together at the same time if the board felt that was a better way to do it. We just, we're scaffolding the information for just conversation and the length of the board meeting.
That sounds great. Thank you for clarifying.
Did that clear it up at all?
Yes, unless you have a follow-up to that.
When are our goals due? Because I know we asked for an extension.
We did.
So when are they due?
We got 60 days on the vision for success and 90 days on the equity plans.
Okay.
So we're looking at June, July, pretty much.
Thank you for that. Thank you. We will move to presentation, 3.1, Presentation on International Students by Thomas Torres-Gill.
Thank you so much, trustees, presidents, chancellor, students, faculty administration, and staff. I'm also joined by my colleague, Mr. Drew Gephardt, who's the International Services Manager. And so I'll go ahead and put up the slideshow right now. And we've also passed around a spring 2019 midsemester report that was submitted to Chancellor White at the end of March to provide an overview of our program as well. So I think that'll load. So I've realized as well that I haven't had many opportunities to speak in front of the trustees. Drew and I collectively have worked in the Office of International Education for over 20 years, 11 for myself, 12 for Mr. Gephardt. We started off as classified staff and through the years moved our way into administration. This is my first year as the permanent director. Last year, I served as the interim director. And so I thank you for the opportunity to present again, and I hope if you have any questions that I'm able to answer them today. But I'm also more than welcome to, or more than happy to come back at future meetings at your request or on my own initiative. So I did want to start off with about our program, since we do have some new trustees here, as well as to provide some larger context. We have in our office, we've been known as the one-stop shop. We manage, coordinate, advise, provide support, and assist our international students, F1 students, with admissions advising, counseling, workshops, and recruitment. It also extends to students on B2 categories who may want to enroll or J1s that come in as al pairs or exchange students who want to enroll or change their visa category or their non-immigrant classification. Another big component of our job is we must report enrollment through the Student Exchange Visitor Information System, or SEVIS, which is administered by SEVIPEP, and reporting to Department of Homeland Security. So a lot of our advisors have to collect admissions documents with bank statements to ensure students have the finances, create a legal document, ensure that they apply for visas, have proper documentation when they arrive, and ensure students meet enrollment requirements. Or if they are not enrolled full-time, which is the requirement, that they meet the conditions to request reduced course loads. We also do a lot of other SEVIS processes, which I'd be more than happy to go into, but they're quite boring, in all honesty. But for me, it's exciting and strategic as well. But we also work at three different sites. When I first started, we were based in the Peralta Community College District, the blue building's just across the parking lot. But since then, we've expanded now full-time at Berkeley City College with the support of President Tomonang and the wonderful staff and administration and counselors and faculty at Berkeley City College, where we now have three full-time staff. And Mr. Gephardt also works at College of Alameda on Tuesdays, providing support for our students for the last few years during the semesters to ensure students have access on campus. And so that is sort of where we are. So we are working on ensuring we are visible to our students on our campuses, and that includes Laney as well. But right now, we have another issue that we're up against. But first, I want to speak about our students. We also have a very diverse set of students. A few years ago, we had students from over 90 different countries, and that's categorized by their country of citizenship based on their passports. Currently, this semester, we have students from 75 different countries. On the handout I provided, I think on the second to last page, or the last page, I believe, has all the countries that we have represented, the second to last page has our top 10. And I could just double-check that to make sure I recall that correctly. Oh, I'm sorry, on the last page, if you don't mind. And for those that don't have that handout available, China is number one, South Korea, Vietnam, Mongolia, Nepal, Japan, Thailand, Nigeria, Brazil, and India, and they make up almost 80% of all of our students. I'm sorry about that. But the 75 countries are listed as well. And our students, they do lots of different types of programs. The most popular one that we promote is the transfer program, also called 2+2. And those are the students that come here to attend our lower-division coursework and meet the transfer requirements during their bachelor's degree. We use ADTs, UC tags. We promote all types of avenues for our students to be guaranteed admissions to our universities in California, but also promote our out-of-state schools as well. A lot of our students also just, and not just, I want to say, they want to earn our associate degrees and certificates through CE programs. Every time I go into the bistro, I see some of our students, they duck out and wave. We have plenty of students that have done apparel design, multimedia, who we've also hired in our office to help create some of our flyers and design our T-shirts that we wear. And so we have a lot of students who come for our certificate programs and our, I'm sorry, career education programs. We also have many students enrolling in ESL. And I can get you these numbers if you request. I don't have them on hand, but a great majority of our students enroll in our ESL classes and earn the certificates there before they begin their associate degrees or complete the transfer program. Sorry about that, Siri. Or Dr. Brown. I don't know. I have to be careful with my phone as well. And finally, we have a handful of students who come here who have foreign degrees that plan on preparing for graduate school. We have about a half a dozen each year that are taking classes in business in English so they can prepare to transfer to graduate school. So we have a handful of students that, that do that each year. So their enrollment trends are different. So we have a very diverse set of students that have very different goals and objectives, and they can be lumped into those four broad categories. Now, on the right side, and I could have and should have broken this up into two slides to make it easier, I know if you look on page one or two, I believe, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling on my phone to make sure I have it. On page one, you could see it in color, that same chart, and that's the head count each fall semester for the entire duration of our program since 1996. So this is 23 years, if I'm not mistaken. And you can see the rises and falls of our head count. I do want to indicate this doesn't include spring, and this is not full academic year totals, but it does give you a general and a broad overview of what our program can do. The reason we don't have the same data by semester for the entire time is because in fall 2008, PeopleSoft was implemented, and so we export from the BI, you know, BI, the enrollment, fall 2008 to fall 2018. But prior to that, I'm relying on strategic reports submitted by our previous vice chancellor of Student Services, who helped create the program or bring it to the district. And of note, I wanted to highlight fall 2001, fall 2009, and fall 2017. And those are the highest points before a decline began. And September 11th, on September 11th, 2001, there was the 9/11 attacks, of course, and that's what was the catalyst for the Student Exchange Visitor Information System, the technology we need to use to report enrollment. And you see a drop of enrollment. In fall 2005 is when we hit the bottom four years after. In fall 2009, we had our highest enrollment totals up until that point, but we all know in 2008, we were seeing the effects of the global recession, and that finally in 2013, we hit the bottom four years later, five years later. And now, in fall 2017, we had our highest total ever for a fall semester. We all know the year before was the presidential elections, and there has been a lot of uncertainty in our field in the last couple of years. There's been a lot of, some documented, some not, anecdotal, meeting with partners and colleagues in the field of tighter visa restrictions, specifically in China. We have lots of competition in Canada. Students are just not aiming to go to the US because of the uncertainty of whether or not they can find employment, if they're welcomed here. There's been lots of initiatives that Mr. Gephardt's launched in our office as well as, you know, through national branding, through NAFSA. And so we're not quite sure where we're going to go, but we're hoping to stabilize and increase in the near future. We're all hoping for some much-needed change in regards to this. But what I also want to reiterate is we will get through whatever this may be, and we will increase above what we've had been before. And it can take a little time for that, to find out where our base is and how far up we can go, but I'm confident it's going to go well over. We have an incredible staff. We have an incredible program, amazing colleges, incredible faculty and support. So I'm positive we're going to keep climbing once we rebound. So this is sort of the initiatives that we have. And again, I'm sorry for the broader-based general overview of this, and I'll go into more details if you'd like as well. The first goal is to stabilize and then increase enrollment. And so how do we do that? We need to create and expand our networks for students to apply to the Peralta colleges, working with our partners that are based overseas or in the US to ensure we are getting our name out. We have, and I've mentioned this before at the budget report in September to the board, we're behind the eight ball in compared to some of our local competition at city colleges, such as Diablo Valley College, Foothill DeAnza, Santa Monica, Santa Barbara City College, who are well-established with international programs. And so we are really laying the foundation of having partnerships that are long-lasting, that are ethical, and that we can really focus on. And that's how we're going to maximize our return on investment. And we're going to strategically plan our travel with our partners. A lot of fairs that schools can attend can cost thousands of dollars just to attend the fair, and you're standing at a booth hoping students will come to you. Working with our partners who have connections in-country to promote programs to students who are interested in our colleges will allow us some of the best opportunities for us to help students navigate our application process. But it's not just through international travel. It's also focusing on a variety of in-house recruitment efforts, and that is going through webinars through Education USA in different countries, contacting directly high schools in foreign countries who host students, of foreign nationals who may be looking at outside of that country to go to school, and even schools in foreign countries that teach English at the high school as a mode of instruction for their nationals. And so we're going to be looking more directly at making direct contacts from our office through webinars. We do have a position posted that we hope to fill permanently, where it's recruitment and retention. That's going to be responsible for ensuring we are making those contacts. And that position is also going to help with maximizing retention to a certain degree because we're not just going to work with students, helping them get here, but we're going to make sure that they stay here as much as they want to. We're going to connect with our current students to ensure success. I want to highlight on, I think, the page five of the handout I provided, 87% of our students have student education plans. I'm not sure what the college percentages are at all, but I can't, I'm very proud of that number because that includes anyone who's in their very first semester as well. And so I know our students are coming here and they're meeting with counseling to understand what they need to take to complete their academical, but there are some disconnects of them in having the classes outlined and them completing the classes. So one of our efforts in the past during the global recession was to implement mandated student education plans for our students, but now we're going to dig deeper into that and isolate and focus on specific populations that seem to be struggling in certain areas than others and trying to in-reach as much as we can to ensure students feel supported, identify ways to further support them, and make sure that we can help them get back on track. We really liaison with our college staff and counseling team especially, who reach out to us about students that they see that they're concerned about, and so we're going to really highlight them and with this role, that's going to be one of the major goals. And finally, expanding services. One of my objectives this year is to investigate and have available additional housing options. We know our cost of living is a deterrent for our students. It is incredibly expensive here to rent an apartment, and it's also more challenging for an international student who may not have a social security number to secure housing because many places require it. And so our students, while they live in our general proximity, many of them live along the bar tracks further down south, and they might be closer to Chabot or Lonnie College. And so we're really looking at how housing can impact our admissions. We know that parents are concerned and would prefer to have dorms. That is one of the major questions they ask. Do you have dorms? And that is an area that I know we should be investigating in our office and not just to provide for our students. I know that's a need for our community at large. And finally, as enrollment rebounds, as we start to see signs of it, we need to be ready to provide more on-campus services. I was meeting with the staff today and reminded of an initiative that I had thought of a number of years ago where one of my main concerns was we got to get on campus. And as the interim director, that was my-- And as the interim director, that was my first goal, to get full-time at Berkeley City College, and we were able to meet that goal. And as our enrollment has changed course, now the major concern is to make sure we have the foundation to be ready to grow when things rebound, but that is still, one of my major goals, is to be more visible to our students on campus. While Laney College is across the street for us, it is visible to us, if a student takes a class at Laney and takes Bart home, they have to walk the other way a lot longer than it would take for them to go to Bart to come see a staff in our office. Even if they're in the parking lot, they still have to walk past the parking lot to come all the way to our office, whether it's raining, or cold, or nighttime, or it's as convenient as we feel like it is, it's not always that easy or convenient for a student who just had their class and may be tired, or may have just forgot. And so, I do believe we need to be more visible on campus as well. So, I hope, if you have any questions, I know Mr. Deppart's going to present as well on the study abroad component, but I'd also, I'm not sure if all the resolutions passed, including the travel, but one of the strategically planned travel that we had on there was him going to the United Kingdom to not only audit a study abroad and just figure out what's going on in the study abroad to improve that piece, but it's also to meet with one of our partners called First Point, who markets to international students in the United Arab Emirates, the UK, who are athletes looking for opportunities to go to colleges in the United States and possibly find scholarships at universities. And then finally, exploring an initiative with a study abroad program in Ireland, who wants to not just connect with us for us to do study abroad, but also who wants to create pathways for their students to come here for a semester to take some of our classes that they'll transfer back as international students, as well as possibly be an option for our students who want to earn a multimedia degree and then transfer to Ireland. So, it's, these are the types of strategically planned travel, where we're incorporating all three things there, study abroad, international recruitment, as well as exploring new partnerships. So, I'll hand it over to Mr. Deppart.
Greetings Board of Trustees and everyone in attendance tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Drew Deppart, I'm the International Services Manager for the office, and part of my role is to provide and manage support services for our international students. That includes international student orientation. I assist our international students with obtaining employment authorization through practical training related to their majors. As Thomas mentioned, I manage our College of Alameda office on Tuesdays, as well as I work closely with our Health Services Department to improve the mental health services that we provide for our international students as well. I also partner and work closely with our four-year universities to help our international students transfer. We host an international transfer fair each year as well to provide those services for our international students. But tonight, I wanted to just highlight very briefly regarding our study abroad programs, which we're doing this summer. And as many of you know, study abroad not only has an impact on career and professional development, but it also has an impact on retention and success. Research from the Center for Global Education shows that study abroad has improvement in GPA rates, completing degrees at higher rates, as well as students who attend study abroad programs are retained at a higher rate as well by the colleges. And that fact is true because I've seen students who've gone on our study abroad programs, and they're here still this year completing their degrees and completing their programs, and some of them are even going on our study abroad programs for a second year in a row this year. This summer, we are providing nine programs, and all, this is also the first year that all four of our colleges will be represented by study abroad programs. As you can see, we are in all regions of the world, we have programs in Africa, Latin America, in Europe, as well as in Asia. And each of these programs are linked to a class, so the students will be earning credit. The faculty, part of my job is to work closely with the faculty to go through a proposal review process where their classes are designed and approved by their chair, their dean, and their vice president, to make sure that the classes meet the curriculum requirements. We also help with the recruitment and marketing, we host study abroad fairs, and we help the faculty enroll students into the courses. Part of my role right now is preparing our students to go abroad. We just, this boardroom was filled with about 50 of our students last Friday, Trustee Handy was there. We were preparing our students on health and safety, getting their passports, their visas, handing out their flight tickets, and having them sign all the waiver forms and student code of conduct as well, to let them know that they're going to be not only representing themselves, but also the colleges on these programs, and we want to make sure that, you know, they're representing our colleges very well in these other regions. Some of these programs are tagged with a university, so our program to Egypt is with the Hidayah Institute of Arabic Studies. Students are going to be taking two weeks of Arabic studies at Berkeley City College, followed by two weeks of Arabic studies in Egypt. Our other program through Laney College is with the Universidad de las Americas, and that's a Spanish immersion program where the students are going to be going there for two weeks and then completing their courses online. Our longest-running program is our Dance and Intercultural Communication Studies Program, which goes to Ghana, and then we are also offering for the, for the second time, a cosmetology program in London. As you can see from the top right, this year, if we, with the enrollment, we are going to meet this enrollment, because our students have their tickets to go, and they're enrolling in the classes right now for the spring intercession and the summer. We will be above 100 students going abroad this summer, which is the highest we've ever been, and that'll put us in the top 10 for community colleges in the United States. Now, part of the initiatives has been, as I mentioned, hosting study abroad fairs throughout the year, information sessions, we've also been helping students get scholarships, and also informing them on how they can use their financial aid for these programs as well. We were published in the first book on community colleges and study abroad this past year, as well as College of Alameda's program to Cuba, which went last year, was highlighted in the Alameda Sun newspaper. And earlier this year, we also hosted a fundraising event at Yoshi's Restaurant here in Oakland, where we raised close to $3,000, and it was all to support the study abroad students who were going. We also partnered with the Oakland A's and the Golden State Warriors. We hosted several nights out where faculty, staff, and students went to the games, and a portion of the tickets sold came back to our study abroad programs. So, I'm very happy that we're at the stage now where we're actually sending our students, we're getting them prepared. Our first program will be leaving to Mexico, May 31st, and then the next one after that will be June 5th. They'll be leaving for Belize. For, most of our programs are one to two weeks, and we do all of our programs at cost as well. So, we, I've really been working closely with the providers and working on getting the best rates on flights, best rates on hotel costs, to make sure that the costs are kept affordable for our students. One story I would like to end on is that we do have one student who is 67 years old, who's going on one of our study abroad's this year. This is the first time she has ever gotten a passport, and the first time she has ever gone abroad. And it's pretty amazing that we get to provide these services, not only the student success and the retention part of it, but the life-changing opportunities that we provide to these students through these programs is pretty amazing and life-changing. So, thank you so much, and at this time, if there are any questions, Thomas or I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation. We'll definitely take questions. Trustee Brown?
Thank you for the presentation, and I'm really glad to see that the program is doing well, and we had had a dip a couple of years ago, so I'm glad that it's back. And it appears as though the study abroad program provides the trips for students to go to some of the countries that we had sort of asked if they could be part of the recruiting program, so countries like Central America, and areas in Africa and the Caribbean are the study abroad programs, but we're still having our recruitment for international students primarily from the places that we had before, which was China and Korea. And I'm wondering if that is just what the market permits, or, we had also looked at Brazil, there were other countries that, well, they're having a little bit more issues there now with their new government. But I'm just wondering if, if some of the efforts that we had made to visit embassies and to expand the range of places where we were recruiting students have borne fruit, or are we targeting those for the study abroad program?
In terms of the study abroad programs, one of the things that we're also working on is developing partnerships with the universities that we're going to, so that we can develop those exchange programs, where students, as we're sending students to their university, those universities can also send students to us. Developed transfer admissions guarantees for our students to go to universities in France, we developed one through Berkeley City College this past year, and those agreements are also to send students here as well. So, there is, last year, so there was a group of students who went to Japan through Merrick College Business, it was Business 72 Principles of Retailing. When they got back from the trip, they were showing pictures, all the students were wearing Merrick College T-shirts. The instructor, the instructor actually had the students passing out Merrick College flyers in the streets as part of the class. So, the, there is marketing, and I think the awareness and the, promoting these study abroad programs and having these study abroad programs go does raise the awareness of our colleges on a more global level.
And to add to that, I think we're trying to be creative in bridging or combining those pieces. In general, though, each market is very unique and different in terms of the, which students might be more willing to apply to our colleges. It takes a, the community college concept is a foreign concept, in that it doesn't quite exist in lots of countries, and it still feels like we have to explain what we do here when we go abroad. And so, going to embassies is helpful for students who are already in the pipeline, but if there's nobody that's expressing interest, it might not be as helpful. And so, we are working on developing partnerships with individuals or companies that are based in those countries who can really help promote our brand, because it's, unless we have something set up where we have a couple of people who are either located in countries or constantly on the road, half of their job, if not more, it's very difficult to get into those markets. So, everyone, it seems, is experiencing a decline or a plateau of their enrollment at many institutions, and so it's really hard to kind of grow at the moment as it is. So, that, it's a combination of the market as well, that's making it really difficult for programs to continue to build.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yeah, hi, thank you so much for both reports, that helped me understand that there's actually two programs that are going on. So, I have a few questions, I'll try to make them brief. I think you might have answered this, but not sure. In your program, and in your program, is there a framework? Like, I hear that you're going to certain countries, you're trying to get Merit or get Peralta's name out there, and there are courses that are being offered at colleges, and you can maybe do that in countries, but do you have a framework of where you're trying to go to? I mean, you know, do you say, well, is this the best country that we should be going to, you know, relative to our students? Also, the money that students are paying to go away for a week or two, is there debt involved with that, and how is that managed once the student comes back? So, I'm looking at a kind of a bigger context, and I'm guessing you have that, but I'm not sure what it is.
Sure, I'll address the first part, I'll let Drew speak to the finances for study abroad. The framework for how we're identifying individuals or places that might help us promote our brand, I believe that we need to diversify as much as we can. A third of all international students come from China and the United States, and a third of ours do as well, and so I believe it is important to make sure we are established in countries that are established, that do send a higher volume, and so that was one of the focuses, to identify partners in certain regions that might be able to ensure that we have stable enrollment. But I also believe that we need to be focusing in different regions that kind of highlight our diversity, because it would, I actually love that we had 93 different countries represented a number of years ago, and for me, 75 is fantastic, I want that number to be higher. And so, we're not just looking at Asian countries, even though when we think of Asia here, sometimes we kind of group, we're not very careful about identifying Mongolians, Indonesians, Japanese, South Koreans, Vietnamese, Indians from each other as distinct populations, and so we are looking at those markets as well, but also in Latin America. And so, when, I've attended a couple of conferences called ISF in December, where we are meeting with potential partners overseas or abroad who might, who are representing different regions, and we targeted all regions. There aren't many in Europe that we're able to really work with, we specifically sought them out, and it's not many, or the many that want to promote community colleges. Universities who have partners like these, they pay a considerable amount of, a lot more money than we can, and so it's less of an incentive. And so, what we pride ourselves in doing is working more closely, collaboratively, having a great turnaround time, being more present for those partners, and we also know how the opportunities that we have for our students are something that students want, guaranteed transfers to UC. So, we have to be creative in who we target, but I'm, I believe that I'm mindful about diversifying this, because we can see if students from China stop attending all US universities, that's a huge hit for everybody, and anyone that's focused just in one region, it's going to be problematic for any program. So, I hope that answers the bigger picture. So, we're trying to target diversity, but also who's wanting to market our programs as well.
Okay, and did you say 84% of the students actually complete when they're here?
No, no, no.
No.
I don't know where 84% came from.
Well, what is the number?
Of completing their program?
You know, the international students who come here.
I don't have that data on hand, but I can get that for you next.
Yeah, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Just in regards to the study abroad programs and the selection of the countries, all of our programs are faculty-led, so it's really the faculty who come up with the country that they want to go to, they develop the proposal, how their course that they want to offer lines up with the country, and then they have to propose it to their chair, their dean, and their vice president, and then what our office does is merely support them through that process and help them, help the students get off the ground. The goal of the study abroad program hasn't been to really recruit international students to come to the United States, but I could see there could be that collaboration there. The goal that I've had this year is just to get as many students, many of our local students who, some have never even left the Bay Area, to get out and see the world, so, but I could see that there could be some more strategic planning in the countries and tying in recruitment efforts into study abroad if we wanted to go that way.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I missed maybe the first part, but is there, is there student debt?
So, in terms of student debt, we really, we offer payment plans, I work closely with students to let them know, you know, we're very flexible, I work closely with the travel agents, but part of it is, these programs have been developed, there's a year-long process. So, we started collecting payments and enrolling students in these programs since last November or December. So, students have had time, and part of what I want to work on is getting these programs approved earlier and earlier on, so that students can fundraise. Like I mentioned before, we did do some fundraising activities, we offered scholarship workshops, we helped them get their financial aid, and then we also work with them on payment plans. And then another big piece is the fundraising aspect for the students, and so we helped them set up GoFundMe accounts, there was a student who, their entire trip was funded through their church. So, the money is out there for students, there's so many scholarships, and there's a lot of free, people want to send students abroad, I don't think, we had, you know, we have a study abroad scholarship, I'll use this as a plug, promotion, we have a study abroad scholarship fund set up through the foundation that people can go online and donate to that, that goes to support, so we did give out, right now, we're only able to give out one $500 scholarship a semester, but we would like to increase that. But we're really doing everything that we can to help support the students in, you know, raising the money to go on these trips.
Is there an average price?
So, our most affordable trip is the one to Mexico, it's 1855, and then our two-week, or 10-day program to Belize is 1980, so we kept both of those programs under 2,000. The most expensive program is our trip to London and Ghana, which are around 3,800. We were able to keep our two-week program to Egypt at 3,100.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can add, I think the 87% was in regards to how many students completed student education. education plans.
Yes.
How many of them complete that, we're still working on.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Withrow.
Thank you very much for the presentation, it was very complete and quite interesting. I've, I've thought for a long time that this is a real strength of the Peralta Colleges, to have an international program. Provides a, a broad-based education that you can't get in just an awful lot of areas. A few years ago, a previous chancellor and I attended the embassy of Chile, Brazil, and Argentina. And all three of those countries at that time were very enamored with our program, and Chile especially stated, that was a previous administration of Chile, but stated that they had a foundation that paid for the total cost of the students to come up to a California Community College. And they, the way this particular ambassador talked, they really preferred to go to the west, the coast of California, they felt that their students could relate to that more. So, it's something you might want to follow up on the consulate and see if they're still enamored with it.
I'd be happy to, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was President Bachelet, if it was her. And I think they did have the partnership with UC Davis.
It was, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you mentioned as well, I studied abroad in Chile, so I'm quite enamored with Chile myself and South America. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to. And, and part of what we did was we ident, we tried to find places in diverse Latin American countries, and we're working with a partner called CSA Beccas, who's based in Venezuela, but represents all of Latin America, where they are also focused on student, student athletes who have TOEFL scores and who want to use community colleges as a pathway, and we're one of their first partners on the West Coast, they predominantly work with Florida and Michigan community colleges. So, I, I do want to follow up with you maybe as well, because I, I looked into the last comment you had at the budget report, and I couldn't quite identify one other piece. And so, so I'd be happy to follow up and look more into Chile.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We will now move into, let's see, consent. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved in second, roll call please.
Student trustee Galan.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Handy. Trustee Gonzalez Yuen. Trustee Napalia Bella Reese. Trustee Brown. Trustee Weinstein. Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you, let's go ahead and move into our action calendar, we'll take 5.3. And five.
We can take these both at the same time.
Five point, can I, I'll read them individually, and then we'll take them both at the same time. 5.3 is consider approval of agreement with Michael Patrick Partners, Inc. and the amount of $80,000 for production of a viewbook for BCC career education programs and placement of career education ads in multimedia outlets. 5.4 is consider ratification of the addendum for independent contractor consultant Elias Legacy Films LLC in the amount of $25,000 for a total of $39,950 for FY 2018, 2019. We're taking both items together, and did we have a motion to approve both items?
So moved.
And a second, and a second, discussion please.
Thank you, Madam President.
I pulled these items actually at the request of the SEIU leadership, which sent me a, an email just inquiring about the relationship between these two items and the work that's done in our marketing program and then with our SEIU employees. And so, I, you know, I, there's, there's overlap, there's differences, and, and so, I'm trying to understand, I guess, two things. One is, when we have a fully functioning marketing department that's fully staffed and, and budgeted, et cetera, what is the, what is the overlap of this possible work with the work that might be done there? And what had just traditionally, even when we had marketing that was fully funded and supported, et cetera, you know, what was already outsourced? I know there's some like ad buys and things like that that had already always been outsourced. But then, there's some work, like video production and other kinds of graphic design and such, that was traditionally done in-house, but as of late, maybe is, maybe being moved out. And so, those are the kinds of questions that I have, and I know they're not, they're not super specific, but Chancellor, you, maybe you could ask your, your, your presidents to, to help us understand.
I appreciate that.
And then.
Cause he knows where I was going. Cause he knows where you were going with that one.
Well, and then, and then the sort of the longer-term question is, what is our longer-term goal and plan with internal marketing and the development of the capacity of our district to market?
Yes.
For our, for our campuses.
Yes, so we'll start with the first question you asked.
Thank you.
And we'll have President Tomannang and President Gilkerson respond respectively.
So, thank you trustee Yuen for that question. I can't speak to district marketing specifically, but what we have at BCC. So, at BCC, we just have one position in the Office of Marketing and Communications, and it is a Public Information Officer. We had a half-time web content developer as well, but due to the vacancy freezes, that position was frozen last summer. So, BCC has never had a separate position that belongs to SEIU in graphic design. And so, we have been outsourcing since even to prior to me coming to BCC, and going to outside vendors for graphics. And we have been also trying to work with our multimedia arts department and our students in, when the faculty are able to create internal projects to build the student portfolio. So, for this specific vendor and the decision that was made through the funding of our strong workforce and other career education dollars, those monies are expiring. And we felt like, due to BCC's enrollment decline, that we really had to be much more intentional and really find vendors that could really give us innovative ideas of how to make BCC more visible. And Michael Partners has a very strong track record, they've worked with a number of universities across the Bay Area and have impacted their enrollment and outreach. And so, that's why we are requesting to fund this vendor for the work at BCC, specific to career education.
So, I would, I would just co-sign on what President Tomannang said regarding sort of staffing at Lamy College, we have one PIO, the primary job is not to do video production, which was outlined in the Elias Legacy Films contract. We have an ANAPZI grant, which is a federal grant, which actually, we work with our program officer to do some incredible translation for the campus, which has not really been something that we could fund in multiple languages for our community, expanding outside of Spanish. So, we have a lot of new things that have been translated. And in addition, one of the things that our program officer decided that we could fund out of our ANAPZI federal grant was actually a welcome video that really could open the doors and really expose our campus community to more things. A drone was used as part of the film production, as well as creating this video. I believe there is a district employee who does do video production as part of the work, but again, these are projects that are across the district and aren't always able to, to meet the needs of all of the things that the district has the ability to do. And so, the staff at this time has used this contractor to do a couple of the specialized projects for the campus. And most of the partnerships that we've done with the district staff in terms of videos has really been specific to sort of videotaping a particular event or something that's happening versus sort of production of these videos. So, we've gone with a partner to be able to help us produce this sort of opportunity for the campus.
Madam President, may I follow up?
Yes, please do.
So, just in looking at the budgets, on the, on the BCC item, it looks as though some of it's going for ad placement, and then some of it, as I'm, I'm trying to follow it, some of it is for, what do we call it, a viewbook. What is a viewbook? If I can understand what that is.
So, the viewbook in this sense for BCC, like the immediate translation, it's like a brochure. But for BCC, we've advanced to more digital marketing and digital communications. So, it is to create digital brochures, so to speak, that can be posted on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and other social media venues.
I see, okay. And then, so I'm hearing that there's a need for this work, and I, I guess what is not clear to me, because we've never had strong representation from, well, for a while, we haven't had strong representation from our marketing department to advocate for kind of pushing out what it, what it could do. It strikes me that much of this work could be done in-house. I don't know, you know, what the skillsets are and what the, you know, I really don't know what the skillsets are. It strikes me, though, that this is a fair amount of money. And for $80,000 or $90,000, that goes a long way to pay salary. And so, you know, we've got a, we've got a one-off project here, and I, I, look, I don't intend to vote against this, I'm, I'm just trying to understand whether we're using our funding correctly and whether we're staffing and thinking, you know, doing forward thinking about what our staffing needs are. So, if we have $80,000 that we spend on a project, that's going to be a one-time project. Now, I don't know exactly what our SEIU members make, but I suspect that for that dollar amount, you could buy a fair amount of stuff. And so, I'm concerned, and I will be concerned if items like this keep coming through in the absence of thinking and planning for district marketing. Thank you.
Well taken. Hot topic, wait, one second, I'm sorry, it's a very hot topic. I have trustee Brown in the queue, trustee Handy, and then I have the chancellor.
I have actually a question that I'd like to ask through the chancellor.
Trustee Withrow.
Regarding the marketing dollars, it appears to me that we're leaving money on the table with regards to the community that we're serving. For instance, the, we have the Alameda County Office of Ed that runs a court school that doesn't, we don't have dual enrollment agreements with Alameda County Office of Ed. So, I think there, there's some low-hanging fruit that we could be picking up. Our declining enrollment, I think, has a lot to do with the fact that our college does not have the interaction with the community, or the, the profile could be raised more in our community interaction. So, I agree that, that we have to do something with regard to the declining enrollment, but I think we might be leaving opportunities on the table and going after expenditures that could probably be mitigated by making connections with the community in our service area. So, I would suggest that we explore working with the county office of Ed and their court school to educate students who could really use our help, and that's something that I talked to the state chancellor's office about when we were doing the dual enrollment presentation, because for the purposes of operating those schools, they are a school district, so we could still do those agreements under CCAP. And we're also, there's also unwed mothers program they have, and there's, there's opportunities that we're not utilizing, there's community-based organizations. So, while we are spending this money, we are also leaving money untapped, leaving FTEs untapped, because we don't have a, we have a population that's in need of education, but we're not integrating ourselves into the communities where those populations are. So, I think that we can advance the needs of our population, our service area, and secure the salaries and jobs of our employees by integrating ourselves more with our community.
Thank you trustee Brown. I had trustee, I lost track, was it trustee Handy or trustee? Yes.
Actually, we have some great examples of like our relationship that, that in the Fruitvale with the Unity Council and, and, and the new property that we're looking at, that's getting out into that community and engaging in that community and offering what they serve is actually great, and, and I understand that there's some other things that are happening. So, I'm glad to see more traction in that area. But with regards to students, we, we can't tie their hands. We either provide something in-house that will allow everyone to get the services that they need so that they can do the outreach and the advertising and the branding that needs to happen. Or, but right now, we don't have that. We have someone in an interim position, and before, for the, for years, as I would go to each college, I would say, oh, why don't you have this department do that? And I would just get a blank look, like, are you serious? So, understanding that you have not had the marketing support that you needed, I'm hoping that we will be able to, at one time, have something that is centralized, that can support all the colleges. But again, you have to look at, what would that look like? Because there's, there's such great need, I mean, we have four colleges. I don't really know if we could do that, maybe if we just look at the bigger picture and try to design what was going to work for the four colleges, I think that would be something that we need to do concurrently. But I do recognize the need for the funding. It's either give the money back to the state, or do whatever we can and look under every rock to get every student that we can. So, I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, chancellor.
Oh, I think you forgot trustee Withrow.
Trustee Withrow, you're right, I'm going to get fired tonight.
Thank you very much, no big deal. You know, I, I look at this a little differently than what has been talked about here, and it's, a lot of it's based on my experience, having gone door-to-door, if you will, in a lot of areas, especially in Washington DC, looking for grant money. The major people who provide grants have advised us that they won't put money in for an organic staff for a continuing operation. It's, they put it in for a limited scope of action to be taken. And if you look at it, it kind of bothered me at the time, but when you, if you look at it, it does make sense that you wouldn't hire a, a group of organic employees and use the grant fund, and then the grant funds run out, what happens to the employees? And that's kind of what, especially the National Science Foundation make a very strong point of that, that they look very closely to ensure that you're not using organic staff and putting money into a continuing operation.
I'll sit. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the comments. I think this is a situation where we're doing the best we can to pump up the enrollment. We are obviously lacking in skillsets and capacity in the marketing department, that's no secret, it's been true for a while. And we have at least two external organizations that will repeat that to you in a written report, FICMAC and CBT. In the meantime, we have to spend the dollars that appropriately that can be used for marketing. To trustee Nikki's question or comment regarding the long-term vision, we are advertising, as I believe our search committee has completed its work, we're going to be hiring a permanent director of marketing. This individual will come in and make assessment of the centralized area, will make an assessment working with the colleges.
working with the colleges and the presidents and their PIOs to determine where we are in terms of needs. And this individual, after that assessment and reading other reports, will be able to help formulate what a marketing strategic plan could be. And that's what we're lacking. We do not have a marketing strategic plan. And that is very much needed. I think over time, we can bolster and strengthen the department so that it can better serve the colleges. I am philosopher around district office functions, that they should be service-oriented to the colleges. And this is one area that definitely needs to work with the colleges so that their marketing and other ideas around how to get the word out about the institution can be best portrayed. In terms of the community and involvement with not leaving anything on the table, particularly students and FTES, I want you to know I have a lunch appointment with Karen Monroe. So you took the, you, you, you're right there. We're getting together next Thursday, just to talk about what else can we do? And that's going to carry a lot of weight with the FTES and the Office of Education. So we're on it. And I appreciate your support around helping the colleges grow their enrollment, even if it's just one-off. We're working toward improving centralized services here at the district office. There's a restructuring plan that will be given to the board shortly and in the very near future. It's an administrative reorg. Services that need to be centralized, such as marketing, with marketing planning and strategic planning, will help long-term. So I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reese.
I should leave that alone, because that was such a fantastic comment. But in addition, maybe how about if I do that? In addition, I saw the Berkeley City College advertisement on the bus the other day, and I was very excited. It looked great. It looked really, really good. And I think in many different ways, what our two presidents over here have done is responded to the fact that, again, the enrollment has been down, what are we going to be able to take care of that? So I think that that's wonderful. And the marketing and the strategy going forward in terms of serving the colleges, I think, is going to be incredibly essential, so great on that. The, the other thing that I would say is, I continue to hear that there are certain skill sets that our PIOs or our certain individuals have at our campuses or at the district that don't quite meet the needs of what we want. And so maybe part of that is we need to rethink the job descriptions. Are there many more skills that we need to bring in so that whoever we hire and whoever applies for those particular positions actually has all of the skill sets that we, at a particular point of time, know we're going to be needing? And the other last note that I would say is, and I know that you all have heard me say this before, the district has a strange relationship with ICCs, with independent contractor consultants. And so every time I see that, my, it's a red flag for me. And the, the less of that we can have, and I think that, you know, we're trying to make things work in, in all the different gaps that we have across the district, and, and I commend all for doing that. But as we move forward, the, the least number of independent contractor consultants we have and hire, I think, would be good for all of us.
Thank you. Are you, are you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. You know, what we heard earlier in the evening from the Peralta Classified Senate was that they are hoping that they can receive more funds for professional training. And so, you know, part of what I hope that we do when we're thinking about what the future plans are is that we take that into account and see if there are classified senate who want to be trained in those areas, since, since there is a need. I, I'm sorry.
Can I make a question?
Yeah, yeah. If, you know, if there's, if there's openings, and there probably are people who want to try something different, that might be a possibility for them. And, you know, our, our job is to not only take care of the students, but to take, take care of our staff and see if, if there can be any help or any way that we can meld those two together. So I just want to bring that up as a possibility.
The only comment I have to that is, the state chancellor's office has done something that's, I guess, first. And the state chancellor's office has sent dollars to colleges around the state for staff development for classified only. And it's a big chunk of change. It's like five digits. So we, I've met with the classified senate, and we've talked about how they can work to structure a program for staff development training using those dollars. And it's a significant amount of money. Also, I should just let you know that our internal processes for hiring includes opportunities for people to apply for positions, of course. Of course, they have to be able to meet the qualifications of the job description in order to be considered and moved forward. But there are opportunities for staff to apply for positions, just from our own HR policies here. Yeah.
So thank you all for that. I also feel very strongly about this particular item, and it's really about, one, the amount of money, eighty thousand dollars on an ICC for advertisement is a significant amount of money. And so here are my three issues. One is, the funding is coming from strong workforce, some of the funding, or a significant portion. Strong workforce, again, was dollars to be infused in our classrooms, to touch our students directly, to enhance program, and to be innovative in that approach. That's one. The other item is, and so I don't believe that this makes that, this, this passed that test for me. The second issue, I think, has been addressed by a couple of the trustees on, we want to ensure that this work is not currently covered in any way, shape, or form by collective bargaining agreements. So that's second. And I don't believe that that has come back to us yet. And I know we requested that information a month and a half ago, when the same issue or similar issue came up at Merit. So we want to make sure that we get that information back and that we're supporting our presidents as best as possible so that they have everything before them to make the right decision. Thirdly, using an agency outside of our area is questionable. This is a, a firm that is located in San Francisco. And I get it, it's only seven miles away, but it's not here in the East Bay. It's a different world. And I'm also concerned about this firm's, when I look at who they have serviced in the past, there is not one community college listed as one of their clients. And so that's a grave concern to me, because we are very, very unique here in the culture of Peralta and our community and the students that we serve and how we serve them. So being very sensitive to working with our local community partners who understand us and who work very closely with us to serve the student population, faculty, administrative, and staff, is really important. So I am not feeling comfortable with this particular item at this point, based on those reasons. Yes, Trustee Handy.
You know, in looking at some of the, the services that they would be completing, if we did, if we did have centralized things, when you're looking at things like, where did it go? Where we're talking specifically about, okay, creative design for transit ads. Those are the types of things that would come under, like, Peralta colleges and then listing the four colleges. So rather than it being for one college-specific, it's more cost-effective if we're doing transit ads or things like that, that it would be listed as Peralta colleges and having the four colleges under it. That's where we save money, I think, doing some things that are centralized. Because basically, we're all doing the same thing. I mean, you all have different focuses in your, in your campuses, but the bottom line is to get the word out to students that we have what you're looking for. And a collaborative effort down the, down the line, I think, is going to be a better and stronger way of, of getting this out. I mean, we used to always advertise things on the radio or whatever through Peralta colleges. Even in the billboards, we're always Peralta colleges, and all of the colleges were covered. But just, just a thought in terms of when centralized, why it could be a lot cheaper for us to have working under one umbrella.
It's economy of scale.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Thank you for that. Madam President? I don't, one of the items you listed was whether any of the activities or strategies are covered by current collective bargaining contract with SEIU. And VC Whitaker has a response for that.
After the board meeting, excuse me, after the board meeting in April, my office reached out to Dr. Burns as well as SEIU. And after going through the ICC that was sent to us, we did let the president know as well as IC, as well as SEIU, that some of the work that was in the ICC that was being performed by that particular vendor was work that could be performed by SEIU, and that's why the ICC did not come back to the board. And since April, HR has been working with Dr. Burns to create a job descri, a classified job description where those job duties could fall under. And so my office has, again, been in contact with SEIU and Dr. Burns in response to that one particular vendor.
Thank you for that. Trustee Brown.
Just one question. Most of our, our demographic is twenty-four, twenty-four through thirty-five, I believe. And most of the people in our demographic in our service area are, they use their phone a lot. They use Instagram, they use Twitter. And so my, but just my question, you guys are younger than me, so y'all don't look at me funny. I just want to know, to what extent are we using those, those modern means of communication? Because I think one of the things that we do is what we've done before, but that's not the way people are getting their information. Most of the, the people in our demographic don't watch regular program TV. They, they stream through their, their phone or their laptop. And so I just want to make sure that when we're doing these job descriptions or when we're developing these, these plans for outreach, we're not using modes of communication that are outdated. I know you guys, because you guys.
Yeah, and they really are. I mean, I was, I had my cellphone on over the weekend, I think I told this to, to Mill, and flashed up the Laney ad, it was beautiful. I mean, it just came right up. It was gorgeous campus, students, I mean, it looked good. And it was about enrollment and enrolling for classes.
And our industry partners, too. We work with the Port, we work with Altabates.
Altabates.
We work with Kaiser.
Kaiser, yep.
Working with our partners to put out that news also. I just want to make sure that we're not, that we, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel, is what I'm saying. And we want to, so. I know the young folk, our more hip president.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I would just say a couple of things. One is, I do believe that, to your point, that our job descriptions do need to be updated for 21st century, sort of like modalities of sort of marketing and communications. I do also want to add, though, that the rate of constant need for content on these platforms and diverse content that catches people's eye is like a daily task. So I will just say, even for myself, as the college president, on Friday, I built an infogram. Today, I did an online video. Yesterday, I did like a little blurb ad. So I, myself, I mean, it's not, there isn't capacity for one person to do that in addition to all the other things. I, I mean, just respectfully, it isn't. So our culinary department, if you've been on Instagram lately, they're doing beautiful things to beef up enrollment. But that's that department posting and doing things, taking pictures of what's happening in their classrooms and pushing those out consistently. So it is a 24/7 cycle of having to try to stay relevant. And that is just, we have sort of older-school kind of modalities that we've been doing here. And so I think that there is some need to upgrade that. So I think we're trying to feed the beast in some ways by having multiple people helping put out messages.
I have Trustee Handy and then Trustee Gonzalez.
Okay. I just want to give a, a response to them looking at, at this as being a bargaining position and the time that it's taken us. We have the best cybersecurity program in the nation and the only cybersecurity program, Community College. The people who have brought that to us, community partners, have basically paid a lot to get this program going. And the emails today are, they are absolutely embarrassed about what our website looks like. So we can't, we have wasted, what, it's been three months? Wasted, while they're wasted, I say because she needed that three months ago, and four trustees voted against it not to do it. We had one college that's working off the charts because of all of the extra efforts that they're doing to communicate, whatever, and so their enrollment is up. The other two are struggling. Now they're trying to find a solution to get theirs up. And then we have the union putting the brakes on it for, what, four months, while they discuss whether or not this could be done as a bargaining unit. So let me just be real clear here. If we don't have enrollment, we return money to the states and we lay people off. So right now, anything that they're putting in priority over boosting enrollment is, is like being penny-wise and pound foolish. We absolutely have to support our colleges in getting this enrollment up. And so, yes, maybe down the line, we can hire someone to put that in, in that position, but this is not a down-the-line type of thing. This is right now. What are we, what are we doing? So the, I'm looking at the emails coming in today where these people are saying, look, if we have to come outside and pay for this, we're going to do it. That's embarrassing. I have brought programs to Merritt College myself that are huge programs, but if people don't know about them, how are they going to go to them? So we got to work together and just say, right now, this is our priority, everything that we could do to support it. At the same time, we're looking to see if we can get someone in-house. But to take all this time away and not be able to pay the person who was helping to increase the enrollment, again, it just doesn't make sense, folks. So are we working together or are we there, okay, let's see what we can pull apart that, you know, we could do something else with? It does, it just doesn't make sense.
In addition.
Thank you, Trustee Handy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we have, did we have other, we saw Trustee Gonzalez.
I think the board has, has raised a, a lot of important points here. And I, I wouldn't say anybody has said anything that I would have disagreed with. I think the, the question here is a question of timing. We've got a frozen position at BCC that may have been able to do this had, had that position been there, but maybe not, we don't know. We've got an interim person sitting in our district office marketing who is just, you know, kind of trying to keep the shingles on the roof in the middle of the storm. And we've got a crying need for enrollment. Now, Trustee Handy and I don't necessarily always see eye to eye on, 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 on things, but, but on, but on this particular item, I, I, I think she's absolutely right. We, we've got a need for marketing to be developed now for the fall term. And if we don't get that work done now, when fall comes, we're going to be hurting. Yeah, eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Eighty thousand dollars could buy a lot of staff time, but we don't have that staff person in place right now. And I'm not, I'm not going to second-guess this one. That's too much in the weeds for me. I think I've raised the policy questions that I want to raise, and I think the board has raised those questions importantly. I, I think this administration has probably heard that, and if they come back in the fall and they're starting to ask for a lot more of this without having addressed these underlying questions about capacity, staffing, et cetera, et cetera, and coming to us with a plan that says, here's how we're going to do this, and this is the stuff that's going to be outsourced, and this is the stuff that's going to be in-house, I, I think, at that point, we'll have a lot more to say. But I think at the moment, well, I don't know how the rest of my colleagues are going on this, so, but I, I think we should bring this to a close soon. Thank you.
Stu Weinstein, I know, Trustee Chancellor, we're, we're trying.
We're trying. I just wanted to say one more thing. I, I hope in the future, the, the board is not in a situation where everything is urgent. I, I hope in the future that the board is not in a situation where everything is urgent. You know, everything has to be done understandably yesterday. And because a lot of things have not been taken care of. I understand that. But it's not the best way for me to have a discussion and to understand everything. So I just want to recommend for the future that we take our time ahead of time and plan ahead of time. So we're not at this place where we're saying, we better do it now, otherwise we're not going to get students for September. Let's really try to do our planning a lot earlier so that we can vote and understand this a lot earlier and not be under pressure. Thank you.
Chancellor? Oh, we beat this one up, I know.
Yeah, you guys have really done your due diligence. So the only other thing I wanted to add, we do have an interim marketing director. And fortunately, we're going to have a permanent marketing director pretty soon. But I just want to, just remind you that we're just down in capacity in that department. We don't have a web designer, video production is questionable, and no graphic designer. So what are the colleges supposed to do? Again, I agree with trustee Weinstein and trustee, and trustee Yun, that going forward, we need to come, we need to have a better plan. And we need to have a better plan of action in terms of how this is all going to roll out and work for the district and the colleges. And if I'm still here this fall, and that's not a threat. Is the door locked? I'm going to ensure that happens. Okay? I will. And I know the staff will be supporting that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion to approve 5.3, 5.4. Are we taking separate votes or is this a vote together?
Yeah, but I think it's together, the motion was.
The motion was, so we had a, we had a first and a second.
I thought you meant roll call versus not.
I don't know, don't. It's been, we, we just need to do roll call on this. Thank you.
And it's together.
Yep.
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Reluctantly, yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yun?
Yes.
Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes, with caveat of hip modalities used for marketing.
Thank you. Motion carries.
It's, okay, no. Can the district do that?
We are.
Well. So Merit has the Facebook Level Up Program, which teaches you how to drive your business through social media. Maybe the district can take that class.
Exactly.
That's a staff development opportunity.
Okay, folks, we are going to continue on. Action item 9.1, consider approval, Bank signer, resolution number 18 slash 19 dash 57. Motion to approve.
It's moved.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yun?
Yes.
Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, 9.2, consider approval of resolution number 18 slash 19 dash 66 in support of compliance with amended consent decree.
It's moved.
It's been moved. Need a second.
Second.
It's been second. Discussion? Trustee Brown?
I'm sorry, I didn't turn on the light.
Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Student trustee Galan?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Yun?
Yes.
Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We are going to, item 10.1, Sunshine, initial proposal to negotiate reopeners for FY 2019, 2020 from the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 39 for regular and hourly employees. And is that a gavel in? Gavel out? And we move to Board of Trustees Reports. Oh, before we move into updates, trustee Handy, yes, please.
I had just asked if we could just get a brief update from IT, just to let us, keep us posted. I actually would really like to have a brief update on most of the board meetings so we can get a sense of how we're moving.
Okay.
So an update on a few items, so.
I'm sorry.
And that was through the, that was to the chancellor.
Yeah, it would, it would be.
It would, it would definitely be under chancellor's report. Right. So the chancellor is going to respond to this, thank you.
But we can agendize it for the future because it's not agendized for tonight, obviously. But, yes, a brief update on IT, we'll work on that.
Thank you. We can't do it tonight because it's not agendized. But we will have it for our next meeting. Yes. Board reports, I'm sorry, Board of Trustees Reports, trustee Brown.
I want to congratulate all of our graduates. Direct graduations are coming up. Students are in their finals now this week. And I want to also congratulate, congratulate, okay, it's so time to go. I also want to congratulate Merit College on having the Latinx graduation. That was wonderful. And I understand that Berkeley City College is having one. And is Laney having a Latinx graduation also? Well, I want to congratulate all of our graduates. And I want to also thank Dr. Burns and chancellor, our interim chancellor White, or acting chancellor White, for their participation in the CCLC presentations that we had in Tahoe. And our college presidents as well. I was able to attend Dr. Gilkerson's presentation, so thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Reese? Trustee Gonzalez?
So I also went to the League's trustee conference. And one of the sessions I went to that I want to just highlight was the session on, on campus housing. And I think a number of, a number of us have been to League sessions on housing. One of the things that, that I thought was noteworthy in this session was that none of the projects that they were talking about were affordable housing. They're market rate housing. That's the discussion that's mostly going on right now. And we really need to rethink how we're doing this. So, you know, that, that was one important thing. And I, I know everybody in this district is, is really concerned. You can't go a week without kind of paying attention to this, or frankly, a day without paying attention to this. The other thing that I'd like to just point attention to, I'm, as a faculty member and as a faculty leader, I'm very involved in the Faculty Association of the California Community Colleges. And I think it's worth reiterating that the FAC Board of Governors this past weekend took two important votes of no confidence. One in the state chancellor's office. And I, I, I just, I don't think that this can be understated. This is the second time in the history of the system that FAC has taken a vote of no confidence in a chancellor. There's something really seriously wrong. FAC is not out to pick fights. It is now responding to what I think many of us in the community college world, and I think especially in the faculty world, but I think probably everybody in this room understands is a, a level of disconnect between the state chancellor's office and what's happening out here in the real world. And the, the second vote of no confidence was on the performance based funding formula, which is wreaking havoc throughout the system. And I just want to have just a quick note. You know, there's a lot of discussion about accountability, 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 accountability. And the state chancellor's office, working with the governor last year, put forward this funding formula that all of us said, this is crazy, it's untested, everybody is opposed to this, you don't know that's going to work, it's not working, it was really improperly budgeted, it's costing the state far more money than anybody in the state chancellor's office said. And so now you get this question about accountability. When you make a mistake that big, when every single segment in the, in the, in the system said, slow down, you're making a mistake, and you don't listen, I think then the question of accountability really has to come back. So I really encourage you to go to FAC website, read the resolution. And to those of you who belong to various professional associations, CFO associations, et cetera, et cetera, please consider your own actions as professionals in the system with independent brains and judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Whitro? Student trustee Galan?
Report.
Trustee Handy?
Again, I guess all of us were at CCLC last week. And I just kind of say ditto to the remarks that Meredith made. And it's also just how proud I am to have had the opportunity to watch our administrators be lead presenters there and very dynamic. And I have a picture of Dr. Burns and Meredith and Dr. White. And I also have a room, a picture of the room, which was standing room only. And I had an opportunity to attend the session that you were presenting at as well. And so it's real, always great to get there to, to be there with your colleagues from across the states. And it was also for me interesting, I've never seen such pain and concern as I saw at that meeting expressed by people. But then again, sitting in the middle of it, it depended on what happened to you that week. It depended on how the funding formula affected you. There were others who were totally in support of it. And so we will see where it will go. But again, I, I think that we're in some very challenging times, and it was expressed, expressed over and over again that week. The other thing that I'd like to comment is on having the opportunity to attend the ASMC ceremony and to watch student after student receive award after award and how much it meant to them. And to see some of our students that have gone from shyness and not being involved in student government, who are about to graduate, who are just running everything. And one young man had collected so many scholarship awards. And then I asked him what his plans was, and he said, actually, he's going to stay one more year at Merit until he can transfer to the Cal system that he wanted. So it was an incredible evening. And I really want to thank the, all the people at Merit College for doing this, for celebrating their students. I didn't have the opportunity to attend the Latinx graduation, but I would say this. The African American graduation, my granddaughter was four months old, sitting in her car seat in the planning session in the first church in West Oakland. She will be 11 in August. This was started by the, the faculty members, not much of a budget, but it was honoring all of the students of African and African American descent. And it was just incredible. I thought, you know, will anybody show? When I went the first time, and I went down into the basement and I turned around and I started crying. There were 200 students there for the very first one down in the basement. We have outgrown that church and will be moving to a larger church this time. I believe it's on the, is it the 23rd?
It's 18.
The 18th, this is Saturday. And so is the College of Alameda Fashion Show, this is Saturday. And I, I've run from one to the other because I'm not going to miss both of them. But what I would say is, I think it's an incredible opportunity. I think that all of our different groups should have a celebration because we have customs and culture that go with those types of ceremonies. And it's amazing to see. So I would be very supportive of trying to make sure that we could have any of those ceremonies, but we could have them together and to find a place like a church or something that could house a large enough. Because I think it's, it's empowering to the entire community when they come in and see and share in that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Trustee Weinstein?
Thank you. I also went to the League. And the first workshop that I took was on emergency preparedness. And I thought it was an excellent workshop, even in a college that is prepared. When something like a shooting happens, it is chaos. And it is really up to us to plan, and plan, and plan as best we can for what is an unexpected event. And I was glad to be with trustee Whitro and president Bonilla because much of it will have to do with issues, obviously, of safety, but also of messaging and communication with the community. So that, for me, was really an excellent workshop to go to. I also want to say how inspired I was by the Latinx graduation at Merit and the speech by, it was Dr. Caesar Cruz. Oh my God, he's incredible. He is just extraordinary. As I listened to him, I just thought, wow, who do we have here? He is just amazing. And I am happy to say that he is going to be at the Undocumented Community Resource Center fundraising and reception, which is June 6. And I hope that everybody will come to it. It's at Berkeley City College at 5:30, 6 o'clock. And he will be there as a speaker, as well as some other people. And I, I hope that we can really raise some funds for these students because they are doing an extraordinary job. This is the third year, and they've been doing this work for more than three years in terms of helping not only the students at BCC and Peralta, but also the people from the community. And that's just a terrific benefit for all of us. So I, I, I want to thank them for doing this. I certainly will, will be there. And lastly, I did have the opportunity to go to what was called Near Normal Man, which was a film that was shown at Berkeley City College about stopping hate, the Holocaust, and redemption to some degree, which was an extraordinary presentation. And that film, that DVD, I have purchased for Peralta. So it is available to people who want to show it in their classes. Ben Stern, who was the Holocaust survivor, who was part of this film and his daughter made the film, you know, you think it's going to be just absolutely so sad. And it is sad, but it is not just sad. And so much needs to be done to stop hate in this country right now. So it was an extraordinary event, and I'm thankful that I was able to attend it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would also like to share a few things with you this evening. One, we want to officially welcome VC of Finance, Dr. Albert Harrison. This is your first board meeting, so yes, welcome. You did not go unnoticed at the end of that, the end of that table. And also, with the rest of my colleagues at the CCLC conference, one of the workshops I attended, which I thought was, just resonated with me, and I was so excited to see, was a workshop on Ban the Box. So the state chancellor's office has provided guidance on Ban the Box, which is removing the background check question from the application to, after an interview has been conducted with folk, individuals who are applying as, for faculty positions, students who are coming in also applying for positions to work with us in their, in their capacity as students, and of course, staff. And this is really important when we start thinking about who we are serving and who we are prioritizing as our students. And again, exactly, when we think about the restoring our community, the ROK program, and we heard testimony from those, from those faculty who came and presented to us several weeks ago, so important. So really pleased to see the state chancellor's office taking some initiative on the Ban So really pleased to see the state chancellor's office taking some initiative on the Ban the Box issue. The other piece is I'd like to give you an update on our search for our next chancellor here at Peralta. So I'll be sending out an announcement, but I do want to share with you here that, as you all know, the search process has began. We are in contract with the Collaborative Brain Trust, and their senior consultant, Dr. Bryce Harris, to provide support to the district for our search, for our chancellor. The approach has been designed to be inclusive and transparent. And you can see this, for example, through our board policy, which requires at minimum one or two public forums for input on the position description for the chancellor. We have asked Dr. Harris to conduct five forums, one at each of the college campuses, as well as here at the district office, as well as with the district governance leaders in small group settings. Over the past two weeks, Dr. Harris has interviewed each of the board members and approximately 25 governance and administrative leaders, and has conducted forums that included more than 100 students, faculty, staff, and community members. So very, very productive. Based on those conversations, he will be preparing a draft for the position description along with a calendar for the process, the calendar process that the board will likely consider at our, at our next May 28 meeting. And in order to ensure continued involvement from all the stakeholders, we've asked Dr. Harris to develop a calendar for the search that ensures the interviews of candidates takes place after the beginning of the fall term, when everyone has returned from the summer break. We have also asked him to allow for five more public forums, one at each of the colleges again, and one at the district for the final two or three candidates. And with that, I will end this piece. I'll make sure that this announcement goes out internally to our community. Our board clerk should be posting this sometime tomorrow. Announcements.
The next regular board meeting will be held on May 28 at the district office boardroom. Congratulations to all of our graduates, as well as to all of our faculty and staff for all their hard work to make the school year successful for our students. And we would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of BCC and Merritt student that passed, Mike Kelly, Tess Mariam, and Baye. We send our condolences to his friends and family. That's the president.
Thank you. That concludes this meeting. We're adjourned.
Good show, good show.
Yeah.
We've got to get staff function identified.
Yeah, I agree.
Because of total disconnect.
I agree.
And your point, why are we running over here, running over here, running over here, running over here? That's because we don't have the structure of what needs to be done to run this place with no priorities.
I agree. Exactly. It won't, it won't change unless we do that.
Yeah, we gotta have it now.
I agree. Let's push for that emergency preparedness.
The one thing that I don't think people understand, I did just a good job describing, when you use grant funds, you have no problems.
You mean if they take on regular workers, then they lose their jobs.
That's hard for me to say, in fact, I heard you, you know, with the fact, national finances, science, and all that. Because I feel very strongly about what you're doing versus everything.